...is going to be challenging to deal with. So that's why it's started these discussions about what to do, when to do it, how to do it, whether to do it. But we're here to sort of plead our case for addressing it if at all possible.
Joe, you got anything?
Well, here's this YouTube.
Video.
This is the YouTube thing that...
Yeah. If you can show the video, that'll help us. One of the preferred hosts for spotted lanternfly, what they really like to feed on is tree of heaven. And so if we take away, take away their lunch per day.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, hi, my name is Joe Locke and I'm the vice chair of Young County Forest Cooperative. And as Lynn says, one of the main concerns with the tree of heaven is that it is the host plant for the young, for the, it's the host plant that the spotted lanternfly prefers to lay its eggs on for its young to survive. So the young will hatch out on the tree of heaven and those leaves. But as you've seen on that video, the adults will eat other things. And there are big concern nationwide in the USDA currently trying to control that insect because they will decimate grapevines, they will also harm some of our native trees like walnuts, black walnut. They're about to come up in the park. That's pretty much all of our shade cover in the park is black walnut trees.
They won't necessarily kill the black walnuts, but they can kill vineyards. Yeah, they can decimate vineyards, so.
One of the other problems with them is because they're such a large insect, when they eat the leaves, they will kind of excrete this sticky honeydew substance, which then forms a black mold. And that will also attract wasps and, you know, there's all these kind of knock-on problems to it, so. So really by removing that tree of heaven, you're removing the attractant for them to lay their eggs. And it will help reduce the risk of you getting infestations of tree of heaven down the line. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. So that means anybody that in the crowd that drinks wine better rush out and buy wine.
Now, we do have a weed wrangle set up. EY has agreed to send out some volunteers for their local date service. Katie Reesner has about 500 volunteers through EY that she's trying to face for September 25th. And we will likely not get all 500 volunteers, but it will be a significant amount that we can actually start tackling some of that and spraying them at the base. And we have these two lovely people here to help us as well. And more. And so this is kind of what we've been working on. And actually, this came to my attention because of Katie, our other board member. She, when I first met her before she joined the board, she had told me she had been doing her best to remove them as she found them along the trail because she goes down that trail pretty much daily. And I had expressed that we needed somebody more experienced in stuff like that to be a part of the parks department. And she, of course, you guys approved her to join the parks board. And that's kind of what spurred me reaching out to the BCIC and asking them to come take a look. With my understanding, that was the first man serving done on that trail. So we've got, I mean, for the time being, Monica, Emma, myself are other board members. We have other paths along that trail that we can tackle and deal with right now. But it is my understanding that this is going to be a while that we're going to be forcing on something like this.
How many of those trees do we have?
Oh, hundreds.
We've got a lot of them.
We have some that bag up at people's properties. The way tree of heaven grows, it forms colonies and it suckers and sprouts, I don't know, yards away from where the mother tree is. And we spotted trees, not necessarily on town park property, but on people's land that abuts the trail that were, I don't know, 18 inches, 20 inches, fully mature trees with still the flowers on it from last year. So we could spot the male and female trees right there, and that's where they're coming from. So, and you can't just cut tree of heaven down. What happens is it says, "Hold my beer," and it just goes crazy. So it will suffer aggressively if you chainsaw it. If you just say, "Oh, that's a tree of heaven, let me take that down." That's not how it gets. It has to be done with herbicide and it has to be done cautiously with the big trees because you kill them. You basil bark treat them with herbicide topically, they're supposed to see through the bark. But you have to wait a year or two until that tree is dead and then take it down. And it's going to involve an arborist for stuff that's that big. The little stuff that's along the trail, we can treat it and then let it die and take it out ourselves. Joe and I are both chemical applicator certified through the opposite state cameras, I believe. So, and I know if there are any farmers in the room, y'all, we are certified as well. So we handle herbicides according to the law. And we know what we're doing on that. So we're willing to basil bark treat them. We won't be able to take the big ones down, but we can deal with the little ones. But there are many.
Is this in a, is it in any particular section or is it all...
Oh, it's the entire section. It's the entire trail, it's on both sides. We even spotted some in the church's backyard. I mean, we spotted some in people's yards that butt up to the north side of the trail. And it goes all, like if you, once they showed me how to spot them, I was standing at the first bridge and I looked down and you see them. There's a row all the way down the trail. Now, I did contact DNR and got the information for the organization that owns the portion of the trail that floods up to ours. And I am going to be contacting them to see if they might be willing to help us out because this isn't just an us problem at this point. Anybody that's neighboring our section of the trail, I mean, because of how far and wide it's been spread, we want to try to get as many people involved to remove them as possible to reduce them coming back. I'm also planning on looking into some grants to address the cost of regaining arborists out at some point this probably next year at this point. It's going to be a multi-year thing. But I have contacted DNR, I have that organization's information to contact. And it is something that I personally think that we need to be looking at, focusing on as we have the time because it's bad. There are other things that we'll be working on when we do that. Weed wrangle, the Asian honeysuckle, multiple floor rows. There's some other invasive species that are much easier to deal with, much less off-putting than, yeah, much less awesome to deal with. There was a question from a gentleman.
Is the tree of heaven also called the tree of paradise? Because where I, I grew up in Cass County, and we had trees that looked very, very similar. I mean, we'd take the thing off with the leaves and peel them off and use those as wicks and pipe them.
Oh, that sounds fun.
Not if you weren't receiving it and had a lot of Big Brother's.
It's also called the stink trees.
Yeah, I just Googled that.
Yeah, brands of...
They call it tree of paradise because they look like, maybe because of the word heaven, people start calling them...
I've never heard it called that, but I don't know.
Yeah, but it looks very similar to what it grows around me, where I'm from. But I've seen them on trails.
Yeah, it's all over the United States, I'm sure.
But I just, I think I just know it's a tree of paradise. Okay, what else might think that's...
What do they do to the wild black raspberry plants? Do they decimate them too?
I don't think so.
That's good because they're right there behind my garage. I just seem to keep them.
I found the gra, I found blackberries, raspberries, yeah. We don't take those out, those are names. We like those. Now, for the time being, I know you mentioned the Asian honeysuckle, and that is something that the park board and our contractors are working on section by section. We're working on getting some of that removed, cutting that back and trying to get that out of there because it's a little easier to remove. So Monica and Emma were with myself, Joe and Lynn when we did the ranch survey. And they've been working on that in every town as well. But it is our goal to not just be identified town and the parks area, but also make sure that the trail is well kept and make sure that we're doing what we need to communicate with the community about what's going on, what was found, and how we plan on moving forward to tackle the issue.
We can do signs, do designs and signs for you if you wanted to get them printed up. They've done that in words plans and we gave them, we gave them the design and they had them printed up just like yard signs and just put them out. And that was very helpful to the population there. They say something about restoration in progress, explain what we're doing.
Yeah.
They had some very good positive feedback from that if people contacted us for more information. And we can do that in future, that would be helpful.
I do have one other question from a community member that's not here today. But the question was, when we're spraying, is there any need to be concerned about dogs and pets and animals and how do we reduce that risk? Do you have specific, like for the tree of heaven or for the...
Yes, for the tree of heaven. Okay. Take your light, the left side, you have your weather, you have your spray. And it will dry pretty quickly. But that's why signage would help. And we will put a dye in it so it'll be obvious that there's been something put on the tree. So that way that...
Yeah, we use a herbicide dye for all of the treatments that we do, whether it's the honeysuckle or the basil bark. It's usually a bright blue dye, so it calls your attention to, oh, that's been cut purposely. Anybody have any other questions?
I have one question. Where did the, they have noise in this box. Where did it come here or what did it happen to?
Good question.
China.
Yeah. And I'm not sure what year. I think it's been 10 years since they arrived in Pennsylvania. And they came probably on ship, more than likely, and from the Asian continent they made it to there.
Just like, that's all they're...
Just like the tree of heaven, yes.
Very nice and awesome.
Mm-hmm, it's from China.
And one, one Chinese...
Well, yeah, they, right.
They picked up on that.
Yes. They do, yeah. They evolved a lot of those. So, and it's my understanding that they have needed to north, the northeastern tip of Indiana at this point. They're having... They're in Allen, yeah. There are spotted lanternfly in Allen County, they're in Michigan, Toledo and Cleveland are dealing with large infestations of the fly. And it's a nuisance and it's not, it doesn't hurt human health necessarily. But I mean, it can damage vineyards, it's a nuisance. And it's quite alarming, kind of like locusts arriving at your party. And the projection, when you look at maps, that the USDA is projecting that spotted lanternfly will be covering Indiana by 2028. It's common, I mean, we can't stop it. It's gonna, it's gonna go across the United States. It's just a matter of being prepared, knowing what you can do to minimize the food sources. And then when it gets closer, you'll have to learn to recognize the egg masses and try to reduce those so that we don't have as many hatching. But, yeah, watch the videos and talk to people from Cleveland and Toledo that are kind of dealing with large infestations.
Is there something that you can buy commercially in a spray can to kill them?
To kill the flies once they're hatched.
Well, the flies are the hatching, either one.
There are things you can purchase to kill the adults. I'm not sure about the eggs. The eggs will die, but grows in a certain temperature for a certain amount of time. That won't happen naturally. They will survive all these things.
Yeah, they will. Yeah, so it's common, it's just a matter of trying to reduce the food sources that they've got. And then the tree of heaven is also allelopathic, which means it releases chemicals into the soil preventing other things from growing around it, which gives it an advantage to its colonial spread. You know, it's wanting to spread out, so it makes the soil toxic to other plants. So you can see on the trail survey, they did point out some areas where we had some healthy plants growing that we wanted to keep that just have not grown the way that they should because the soil is just regaining toxins and degrading the nutrients. Once we get the honeysuckle out and start controlling the tree of heaven, you'll have many more native shrubs and orbs growing in where they should and the hell, the trail will be healthier for it. So it just takes some time. And in the case of the tree of heaven, it's going to take a little bit more than what BCIC can help you with. We can do some of it, but it might be a larger problem than that.
Anybody else have any questions for the two gals?
We appreciate your time very much.
Thank you, Lynn and Joe, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. And you have our report, we're available by email and other methods through Seravi too. If you have further questions, we'll be happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Or we can hook you up with other resources that are much more knowledgeable than we are.
Appreciate it.
I will see you in my report next week.
Okay. Dan, you're up.
I'm up. Okay, good evening everyone. Last month, on March 31st, we turned in two PERs on behalf of Thorntown. One was the sanitary sewer master plan PER and the other one was the water master plan. We also, if you recall, we talked about doing a asset management plan. We did not get you guys to pay for that, but we put one together anyway because we thought, in talking with Jared, we didn't feel like SRF was the right funding mechanism for you guys. But Jared reminded us that there is cool funding after they announce all the other funding. So I thought, wow, we better get that in so we're eligible. So it's in, we have acknowledgement from SRF that it's in, so we're good. So I can go over both of these, I'm gonna leave these here for you, Corinne. Did I send you a digital one?
Mm-hmm.
I think I did. I need to send one to Eric. Does anybody else want digital copies of these? Bruce?
Well, you want me to just forward my email to...
Yeah, once you forward, you've got the, it should be good. Should you forward the email I sent to everybody? I think the water master plan is, we've gone over that, I don't know, 10 times. I probably don't need to go over this very much. You guys need more capacity, that's what this is. It's about four and a half million dollar project. We don't need to get rolling on design probably until July, but we do need to get going on it. It's going to take about six to eight months for design and it's going to take about 12 to 16 months for construction. So that puts us in the spring of '27 if we get started middle of this year. So, and I think that lines up with what Arbor's thinking. All right, before I go to the sewer, which we haven't talked any about, do you have any questions on this?
I have one question. I don't may be getting ahead of the process. Excuse me. We talked about needing a little property down there to do this. Have we ever done anything on that? Have we gotten it or knocked out?
We need to get it. It's part of, part of the design process, but we do need to get it. We actually need to get the well field property released and enlarged. That's probably number one. Number two would be getting that little piece right there by the clearwell. So, one, I think Earl, we've been out there looking at that, so.
So we don't have either one yet?
No. Nope. Okay. Sewer master plan's a little more complicated, sewer always is. You guys, you know, with water, you were at capacity with Arbor. We have already signed a capacity allocation letter for Arbor for the sewer. The sewer, the sewer line or the sewer plant has a little more capacity than the water. It's about .25 MGD. You're not going to hit 80%. I'm looking for that page. You're probably not going to hit 80% for another three to four years. So this is not something you really need to worry about right now. We don't, we're not recommending getting design started until, like, well, there's a schedule in here. Well, schedule will probably start design in '27. So it's something we don't really want to even get moving on until we get the water thing taken care of. Water's more important. The sewer is something that we got to do, but it's not... The Arbor situation will accelerate that because once you hit 80%, you're going to get an early action letter from IDEM. And then, so we're thinking that that's going to happen in 20, 28 or 29. And then it's, once we start design, it'll take about three and a half to four years once it's start designed and once it's finally completing construction. So if you're getting something in '28, '29, you're wanting to start design probably in late '26 or early '27. But it's not something I'd worry about.
80% and that what you said was a cutoff right in?
80%, they send you an early action letter of capacity. At 90%, they will require you to pass a sewer ban and you can't connect anybody else.
But you still can between 80 and 90.
You still can. Yeah. 80% is just kind of an early warning type thing, so.
Is 163 homes going to bring us to that 80%?
No, you're going to be real close.
Probably we're going to be below that.
You're going to be below that, but you're going to be very, very close. It depends on, the 163 homes will get you very close. The next whatever happens, you're going to get, you'll be at 80%, you'll be over 80%. So something to start thinking about, not something to worry about today. But it's in IDEM and SRF, so they have it, so those are completed. Anybody have any questions on the sewer?
If we were to do, I'm sure you're reference in a mechanical plant, would we have room out there for it?
Yes, you do have room for it. We're actually using, reusing one of the lagoons as an EQ basin. And we're going to use what's a system called a BIOLAC system. It ends up being a little cheaper. Well, that's one thing I didn't mention, the cost is obviously a lot more than water. It's about 23, I think it's 23.8 million. It is a mechanical plant, yes. With clarifiers, UV, all that stuff. It's a big number, sorry, Max.
You just had a coronary.
Water's a little easier. Water's a little easier on the wallet.
But it's still going to require 24/7. So we need, we need more people, besides the plant, we need more people to run it, is that correct?
Uh, no, with the size, you're going to be able, we'll put monitoring in that. You're not going to need to monitor it or have somebody out there 24/7. You'll have like SCADA system that will allow you to just have a guy out there every day. Now, it depends on your testing. Earl, do you know at your current plant, you have to pull, grab samples three days a week?
For chlorine and for decontaminating?
Yeah.
Twice.
Twice, twice a week. With this size, you're probably going to go to three, maybe, maybe five times a week, it depends. You may need to get, you have a class two, class one license?
Me? I have a class one.
Might have to look into getting a class two. But you don't need somebody out there 24/7. I think that's something Earl can take care of with his guys. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the present.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll just comment if I could on the sewer. Dan and I had a short discussion the other day. I kind of told him some thoughts that I had and we think they're sympathetic to at least investigating it. We know that the county is looking at doing something out here at 47 and 65. And that plant would be very similar to what you would build here. And I've already been talking to a couple of the county leaders about the possibility of us partnering altogether and maybe sharing the cost of that and possibly having that system run from here to help differentiate the cost of the build and to bring in that additional revenue from that out there if it gets built. I think we'll see a DC this week or next week to see if they're going to improve the project. So their timeline was very similar, three, four years. But they were going to start out with some commercial subject systems and then work toward a sewer district, which would, what this would probably end up being would be a district that we'd all be a partner in. So I think it's a possibility. I don't know if it's what we want to do or not, but I think it's something that we should keep looking at.
What would the district encompass as far as size?
It could be anything you want it to be as far as not being, as long as it's not being covered by another district or another municipality. So it could stretch to there. The original EDA that the county grew up, when I was there, went to the railroad tracks. So that would probably be what you'd want to look at is going over and matching up with what the EDA, the county set up, the economic development area.
Well, would that encompass Lilly or is Lilly already taken care of?
Lilly's already in Part 11. And so London basically stops right about the golf course. And so you would not be going anything south of that. But the other opportunity you've got here, and you know, this can go in different directions. You can have multiple plants under the same district. And so it might be beneficial to be in conversation with the other small towns as well, specifically Dover, for instance, because we know that when the roundabout goes into Dover, there's probably going to be some interest in some of that money there. So there's just things to look at that is more of a 20-year long-term, 30-year long-term picture, but you'd have to kind of get started now to get...
What would it require as far as the collection? What would the collection for the town of Thorntown look like in pipe size to go across country? And then how many, how many pump stations would there have to be between here and going over to where it would go into that plant? That's going to be a sizable chunk of money to do that.
Yeah, if you went and did, Jeff and I just talked a little bit about this. You're going to go all... You're going to go all the way to forty-seven and sixty-five. Depending on what the demand is out there, you could probably do it one regional lift station and either a six or eight inch force main. And the cost of that, while it's, you know, it's five, ten million dollars, it's not thirty million dollars for them to build a plant or twenty million. So, it's, it's a much better situation for them to do that.
Yeah, my thought was kind of if they're going to build a twenty million dollar plant and we're going to build a twenty-five million dollar plant, why couldn't we build one thirty million dollar plant and serve both?
It would definitely be, well, a lift station and one force main would work out here.
And the nice thing is, since you've already got a billing system set up here, you don't have to go through that. They wouldn't have to go through that process of setting up a maintenance and billing system for what they're building.
See, Dan, that's what I'm calling out. Save, save some money.
Have somebody else pay for it.
Exactly, yeah.
Perfect.
Good job, guys.
If that goes through the A P C and they approve it, who is going to pay for it?
That would be built by, well, if the A P C does that, then they would have to go through the process of creating a sewer district. That takes about eighteen months, something like that. Maybe up to two years, depending on how quickly you can get a hearing on it. But there's, since the county has not done one before, but there was one started back in the seventies when there was one started for Old Indiana. And it never got, it got a hearing, but it never got past the hearing point. And so, I think, and everything, everyone that I've spoken to at the state level says, if we apply, we'll, we'll be a perfect, a great district. And so, that process, I don't think will be hard. It's just some time that it takes to get there. But the bigger process will be creating a funding mechanism that, that we can all live with and, and the bonding. Nice thing about doing it as a partner with the county, you get to use the bond rating for the county as well, which is very high.
Well, the, the county though, say Thorntown opted out of it. The county is responsible for paying for whatever is put in then, is that correct?
If you commit to a bond, then you can't opt out.
No, I'm just saying, if we didn't, if we opted out to start with, who pays for that plant? Who actually pays for it? Does the county pay for it?
Well, if, if the county's doing their own plant out there closer to the site, then they'll pay, that'll, that'll be a part of what they're paying for. And their rate payers there will be the ones on the hook for paying that.
Yeah, so we'd be paying for both of them, because we get the county tax for that, more than we get what we got to pay for this one.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm saying is, in the first place, if that takes in farm, the farm communities out there, can you imagine what that's going to cost the farmer for being on the sewer system?
No one has to join a sewer system. What, you can run the line down and there's no, there's no way we're going to force somebody to go on it. The only time somebody could ever be forced to go on to a sewer system is if they're trying to refinance their home or they're trying to sell their home and use some type of federal financing like the F H A, U S D A or V A. If they're trying to use that, then those loan companies technically could require them to attach to a sewer. But there's no reason for you to ever require anybody to attach to it, other than the new builds that would be a part of the project.
So, the ideal thing to do would be to build your plant in conjunction with this and build a lift station and a force main out, out east and have a large tax fee to pay for a lot of your plant. So, if they're going to spend twenty million dollars to build a plant, it'd be a great deal for them to only spend ten.
No, I'm just trying to figure all the sides and what, what that was going to encompass because if, if people aren't forced to get on it that are in that area, then they still use their own sewer system out of their, their homes now that they have. Then who's going to pay for all this? Because there isn't enough people between here and there to pay for it.
What they're looking at building out there is a commercial development that I think has, trying to remember how, I think there's like eleven sites total in that development that they've laid out. Those sites would all be then commercial users of the sewer district. And that, they'll use more than what you, you kind of are thinking. I mean, it'll, it'll, the rates will come back faster than you realize because when we had looked at it, it was going to be feasible economically for that to have its own plant. And that we were looking in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range. Now, the, the nice thing about bringing a plant here and having some control from here is there's two things. You, you, you get to use that plant for further development here in the town, but you also have a say in everything that happens with that district. And you would have a board member or two on the district as a part of it.
That'd be like, it'd be like what I was there several years ago. It'd be one board member from Thorntown on there and five from Lebanon.
Well, Lebanon wouldn't be a part of this one, but I see what you're saying.
There'd be five from the county and one from Thorntown.
It's possible.
I know how that works.
It, it's based on the number of acres and the population within those acres.
Okay, we got any, anybody's comments or concerns from the public? Anybody out there would like to speak? Nobody. Okay. A P C.
All right, three things. Two short, one a little bit longer. First of all, we're doing some shifty. Eric Smith has been a town employee serving on our A P C. And Dalton Humphries, who is a town employee, would like to be on the A P C and get an experience and learn more about how things are done. So, we have a spot open for a town employee. And then Eric will just go back to being a resident. And then, that'll give us our seven members. So, if you guys want to go him on, if you think it's feasible, you can get him sworn in and he can attend our next meeting. The second thing is, is Marcellus and Deb Lazaire are going, they are currently, uh, well, they haven't started, they will be starting very shortly on updating our one fifty ordinances. It's in our notebook and online. We're going to update them, throw some out that are irrelevant right now and update those. And add sign ordinance. Okay? And then, I'm sorry, and the fence ordinance, sign the fence ordinances. And then, the last one, Tim Silver, who's actually here tonight from Industry Adventures. They are a, I'm trying to find out how I want to say it. They come in and they can provide, this is actually adding more residences to our town, but lowered income housing, one of the big things people complain about Arbor was the houses are going to be too expensive for the normal person here in Thorntown, which, you know, people that live in Thorntown already have a house. But it's going to be like, more like two-piece modular homes on foundations is one option. You can also do a condo style. So, people have said something about that being an idea. They manage trailer parks, which would be great if they could get a hold of R three. But I'll, I'll just go ahead and let Tim talk, talk to you and if you have any questions for him, maybe you can answer them and maybe he would want to come in and present and do a full presentation at some point.
Of course you do, Don. Does Eric need to resign and then be reappointed in order to appoint somebody else to cause these change of positions? Actually from.
Well, he, he's still on the committee, it's just that he's not.
Still on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he wants a appointed position for it.
Let me find out from Amy. No, he does not need to resign.
Okay. Okay, we're good for that, then.
If you want to go ahead and somebody make a motion to Dalton and seek to spring him in.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dalton Humphries to the A P C.
Is that brief?
Say it, on favor. Okay, Dalton's on the board.
I say, I didn't know we were doing that tonight, so I don't have the paperwork ready. So, Dalton and I will just have to work it out and see if, you know, Earl or Danielle or somebody can be a witness and we'll just get you sworn in before you guys have a meeting, okay?
Or you can hold up your hand and say I do.
Okay.
Okay.
So, obviously, Don, you've got the hour-long version of this spiel, but I represent a local builder who, like you said, specializes in low and moderate income housing. And part of the way that we've done that strategically is by using modular housing, which is a mostly manufactured product that can be brought on-site. It's built in another facility and it's done multiple times over and over and over. And so, it's very efficient in terms of, in terms of that process. So, a lot of units can be produced quickly. So, eighty percent of the construction is done off-site, twenty percent on-site. And, and for that reason, we can hit a price point that's generally a lot more affordable to lower-income families. Depending on land costs, development costs, that sort of thing, we can generally offer them between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And that's a fourteen-hundred square foot home. So, there are some really good options there. We've been trying to change the language with mobile home parks specifically, not calling them the trailer parks anymore because we're trying to improve the level of dignity that people have who live there, right? And so, just a, a, a small language shift really helps things. But like you said, we do management overhaul as well. So, we can take a property typically that has been either scraped or there are a lot of abandoned homes and we can scrape those off, bring in new homes and really add some value to the, the land itself as well as, again, providing more dignity for people who live there with just general aesthetic improvements. And so, we, we have a variety of ideas, things that we think could help Thorntown. We're also thinking a little bit bigger picture in terms of some of the sister cities that are around you too. Where I live is Westfield, the very southwest corner of Westfield. And so, the, the cities that are around me know that there's a need for low-end housing, but tend not to do anything about that need. And so, what we've noticed is that there's a really massive need for it and no one is providing it. And so, we're trying to go to some of the, the smaller surrounding towns to see if they're willing to help address that need. So, that's kind of what we have going on in the background. We're also very aware of the Lilly facility that's going in in Lebanon and the eight thousand acres of mixed-use development that are going in there. So, another idea that we had that I presented to Don was a temporary housing solution for the construction workers who are building that. I've already spoken to Lebanon about that idea. They're not particularly keen on that. They're, they were out of water use as of the end of last year. They're working on getting tens of millions of gallons of water in over the next few years, but they're just, they're not able to support it. And they've also said that the, the people who live there would not be generally in approval of something like that going in in their backyard. And so, again, we're here to try to meet the needs of the people who are here. And so, wherever we can do, go to make that happen, what we want to do is we want to make sure that we can partner with whoever leads to make sure that what we're doing is actually mutually beneficial. We don't want to come in with an agenda and say, here's what we do, let's make it fit. We want to come to you and say, here are the things that we can do, what fits with what you want for, for your city, for your town. So, those, those are just a few ideas that I presented to him. If we did something like temporary housing, that would be something that is low-cost enough on the front end that on the back end, once the majority of the facilities are built, we could completely transition that into permanent housing option afterwards. So, that's another thing to keep in mind.
Have you been around to have any kind of idea what kind of land that you'd be interested in?
In, in this general area?
Yeah, or is that for us to provide to you?
Any ideas would be helpful. I know there's a lot of farmland and generally those parcels of land don't just go on the market, right? So, usually that's something where it's, it's really based on relationship. And so, any help there would be really good for us. For something like a campground, obviously you've got the one out on the northwest side there. But water features are great for something like that, so that's consideration, creeks, lakes. But yeah, anything that we can connect to city water. I mean, we have a, we have a mobile home park that's just outside city limits in Kokomo. And we've been dealing with IDEM for a long time on trying to fix some issues there. And so, I say that to say, we can work with well and a wastewater treatment plant, but any connections that we can have to city water and wastewater would be helpful too. So, that, we would like to keep it as close to the, the town as possible.
When he talked about the houses being eighty percent the modular manufactured and the twenty percent being construction, I, Gary, there's a two-piece, they actually, they'd be something like Gary's, but then they would come in and build a front end onto it, maybe the porch or another living room panel sticking out or something to the back. So, it doesn't look like a two-piece one.
Yeah, you can build garages, you can build porches, really whatever, whatever you want. You can turn them into townhomes, condos, single-family home, duplex, anything you want, very customizable.
Are you talking about wood-framed offices?
Yes. Well, they are wood-framed, but they're still manufactured.
It's an stainless steel chassis, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but they are obviously strong enough to be delivered on a truck. And ultimately, they're, they're as strong as any other stick-built frame would be. All of the, the same requirements for joists, two-by-six exterior framing. I mean, they're built to last, they're made to be permanent homes. They're very energy-efficient as well for that reason.
And another thing that we'll get into a lot here, but it goes along with our ordinance update of the tiny homes that are now becoming more and more popular because they don't need our minimum square foot each. But a lot of people are taking those and then putting them, you know, most of that would be the A P C, the county council, putting something like that on, on someone, somebody's property, they want to put something like that on it for a mother-in-law apartment, for lack of a better term, or something like that. And then, when they're so long needed, they could actually rent a house in their D and B or something like that. But just, you know, tiny homes are something that are coming. And they are, they're getting better and better. And it's something you need to really look into and consider. And that's what Devon Marcellus is checking into with our ordinances.
Well, in the minimum, twelve hundred square feet, is that, is that what it is now?
That's what it is, but the tiny homes, they can have two bedrooms, two baths, a living room and a kitchen and eating area, it'd be nine hundred square feet. Probably be roomier than your trailer. And they can also have a second story one. And that's more, you know, retired-type people might be more into that. So, they have less property maintenance, smaller area to just live in and just be available to our elderly. Unless any questions for Jim?
You got any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, but we didn't tell Ben that he should come to his meetings, did we?
I don't know, I wasn't involved in his interview, so I don't know what he was told.
Yeah, he's not here. But I know that the fire department do. They will do.
I'm J C Whitaker, I'm the president, the board director of the fire department. He's Dalton Davis, he's the vice president. We're just here for more transparency, make sure we're communicating well. Quick report, it's currently over a hundred and sixty-three runs this year to this date. Last year, we had about over five hundred, around five hundred and four total for the department. We are two departments in one, so for the town, we had around forty percent of those in town. So we're around two hundred runs for the town. Currently, we're sitting at twenty-three active members on the department. Historically, we've stayed around thirty members total. We did just recently post a Facebook ad for accepting applications. If anybody's aware, anyone that'd like to be a part of the community, serve a, work them all. So I have the report, any other questions that I can take?
Twenty-three members, are they all, you guys all work both the city and?
So we all cover whichever area the run comes out to. I think by jurisdiction, twelve of us are township and eleven right now are town, but we don't just respond to those areas, we respond to wherever we're.
Oh, okay.
Two separate entities, but it operates.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Police department? Nothing? Stormwater board? I don't have anybody drinking stormwater. You got a bridge up there? Utility?
Um. I was hoping Amy would be here, but is she on the phone right now?
Well, so she's, she's doing the YouTube, so if you have something to ask her, we can get her on here.
I don't know if it's important that we ask her, but we've run into all kinds of problems. We were going to make Gary a consultant, we talked about that, the guys proved it all. All seemed very simple when we were talking about it. But then it came up that he needed a million dollars worth of liability insurance, couple other problems, I don't remember what some of them were. So it seems to me it's going to be easier just to make him a part-time employee making seventy-five dollars an hour. We're not talking about a guy coming in here once a week for three hours a week. We're talking about calling the guy occasionally, which he's going to take our phone calls for free, and if we really need him to come to town to look at something that Earl doesn't know about yet, which hopefully won't happen too often, it's going to be seventy-five bucks an hour for him to come to town. I don't see that it makes a difference one way or the other for us, whether he's a consultant or a part-time employee. But, and Amy will have to speak to this, but it seems to me that it'd be a lot easier just to make him a part-time employee and he'll make seventy-five bucks an hour when he works.
What she said that she's.
Employee is okay.
She says employee's okay, so.
Cleaner. She says cleaner.
Yes.
Only thing I can think of top of my head would be the salary order, so they'd have to cover that in the salary order.
Yes, so we'll have to change that.
But that, I mean, that can be changed, but.
Right, we just have to approve the seventy-five dollar an hour fee for him for his twenty-five, I think, for most of them.
Are you okay with it, out of your funds?
I'm sorry?
Are you okay with it out of your funds?
Yeah, he doesn't care how we do it, we're just trying to make it as easy as we can make it. He's not going to buy a million dollars' worth of insurance.
I don't expect it to.
So you're okay with, with the utilities paying the employer portion of the tax, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I know, I think you and I talked about this. Gary is probably going to want to, well, he's going to need to fill out new W four paperwork for me. And for the federal tax, he may want to stipulate so much, you know, twenty dollars or something every time he gets paid, because otherwise there probably won't be any federal tax deducted.
Well, I don't know what he'll want to do, I can't speak for him, but if it was me, I wouldn't have owed him.
So sending to me.
He's not going to make three thousand dollars a year, he's going to make maybe five hundred.
Yeah, but he'll still have to pay tax on that in April.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So anyway, I guess, I don't know what you have to do, you have to have an ordinance or we just need a vote that we're going to pay him to be an employee at seventy-five bucks an hour?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to do that, and then we'll change the, change the ordinance.
Okay.
Right here.
You have a motion to hire Gary as a part-time employee at seventy-five dollars an hour?
Your second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Thank you. Uh, I think really that's all I got.
Last time I was here, I talked to you about the flow meter going through wastewater plants. This relates to what Dan was talking to me about where we're at with the flow. I did order it the next day, he told it to be a minimum of three weeks to get it all in, and then they'd have to install it, which might be up to one to two long weeks when the natural schedule got ended. So that process has been started. The other thing, at the last meeting, we had Tilford Shepherd show up and talk about some water gathering in his yard. So I've been by his house continuously since then, clean that night, and though, yeah, I can't see water coming from his neighbor's yard, there's some of it this morning, but well, that lunch had already dissipated, it was gone. So my thoughts are this. The water's not from infrastructure from the town. Of course, that road down through the interstate road anyway to the gray curb, it guides all rainwater to the drain right past Stalkup. So he even told you it came from his neighbor's yard. So under the circumstances, if I may, I'll remind you that when Dustin Dickerson approached us about the same situation at the mill or the elevator, then we told him, hey, that's, that didn't come from us. If we did it for you, we'd have to do it for everyone. So I'd say under the same circumstances, if no way you can justify offering him any sort of surplus, it's something he needs to work out with his neighbors, I'm going to tell you. It is something with neighbors, yard. But it's nothing we can do about it. That would be my recommendation.
His neighbor's yard is higher than his yard?
Uh, no, in a, in a certain spot it is, so Tilford has a pretty nice little ditch in his front yard and runs down very clearly from his house. But the ditch, which should run towards Stalkup and go down that drain that's right there, kind of fluctuates. So right where it gathers, it has a little bit of a rise, so holds it right there. So his yard in that area is a little bit lower than his neighbor's yard, but it quickly rises, which is why I pulled it there. The neighbor, his neighbor has a lot worse water problem, he does. And there's holes a little bit closer to my backyard.
Amy has a comment? Amy has a comment? Okay, Amy's comment is, "The town doesn't historically and shouldn't get involved in disputes between neighbors about water." So she agrees with what Earl was saying.
Okay. We need to do the minutes for the.
Is that all you? Is that all you had, Earl?
Yeah, that's all.
Did you guys all look at the minutes for April seventh? Need a motion to accept the minutes for April seventh. I'll make a motion.
To accept the minutes for April seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Your second?
My second.
On favor?
Aye.
Posed. Tell them that passes. Okay, we've got the others who do it later, right?
Do what?
Yeah, the A P D, that's a good idea. We do that again.
And the register and the payroll. They're both in there. Okay.
Your turn.
Okay, a couple of different things. You guys already know, because I've sent you the balanced reports, that February is closed, it is history. And as of six forty-five this evening, March is closed, and it is history. So I'm finally current after all of my woes with my bookkeeping system. So now we're okay, and I have to do payroll tomorrow, but one day this week, I will get those March reports sent out for everybody. Brayden and I are starting to work on the bidding process for the sidewalk, benches, the planters, and the tuck-pointing that goes on with the Odd Fellows building. So because we're using federal dollars for all of that, all of those things have to go through the bidding process. So he's getting all the specs ready. As of right now, our plan is to open those bids June the second. I think that's the first Monday in June, that's when we're planning to open them. So Amy will be working with us to make sure that we have to publicize that twice in the newspaper. And she will make sure that we have all the legal language in it that it needs to have for the federal dollars. And we will also be sending invitations to vendors that we can make contact with as well. So that's all, because it's federal money, that's the way it has to be done, so we're working on that. We found out last week, some things were confusing to me because they have told us that we have to have all of our money spent by December of twenty twenty-six. But now they have come back, they went to Brayden first, and he thought he needed to have his construction stuff complete by December, and now we're being told that he's supposed to have that stuff done by September so that I can have all the invoices submitted to the I M P O by the end of September. So that's making us really hurry things up just a little bit. So that's where we are on that. I know, coming up for me over the next four weeks, pretty busy time, I have a tax webinar coming up, a payroll webinar, budget, Aim Court Treasurer's workshop, and I will be hosting Andrea Kern, who is the new C E O of the Boone County E D C. She's going to make a visit, come to Thorntown, and will probably just make a little tour of, show her what Thorntown's all about. Something else that I have, everybody, we voted here a meeting or two ago on Jeff Wolf's contract, and it was voted on, because we didn't have a clean contract, so it was voted per legal review of Amy, so she has gotten everything on here. So we have that for us to sign, actually, we only have to have one person sign it. And then Jeff signs it, yes.
I've got on that, but the compensation paragraph is not correct.
Oh, we need to fix that then?
Yeah, it was set at the original rate that I proposed.
Okay.
It's on there, we need to change that. Probably just the easiest thing, we can switch it, take the hourly rate off and make it the forty-three-year basis. Probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay, was that supposed to be one-ten?
It was one hundred.
Oh, one. Okay, we can do that.
Yeah. Other than that.
Okay. No, if you want to sign, I can fill out the rest. Then something else that we have, this came from Klein Peter. It is addressed to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. It is regarding determination of effects of finding no historic properties affected. Okay, Amy wants you and Jeff both also to sign your initials by where I put my initials. Amy, I don't know where that thing is. Okay. So this, this is going to a Mr. Chad Slider. Dear Mr. Slider pursuant to thirty-six C F R, Part Eight Hundred, the Town of Thorntown has determined a finding of no historic properties affected for the Water System Improvement Project referenced as D H P A number three-three-six-three-six. I have received your letter dated April fourteen, twenty twenty-five, regarding the Section One-O-Six Review Documentation Submitted to Your Agency for the Town of Thorntown Water System Improvement Project, also referenced as D H P A number three-three-six-three-six. Thank you for your very timely response to our submission. Upon reviewing the materials submitted, we believe this is correct to state that no historic buildings, structures, districts, or objects within the area of potential effect will be adversely impacted by the project. Therefore, we believe that a finding of no historic properties affected accurately reflects this project's impact on local historic resources. All of the information evaluated to make this determination will be available to the public and concerned parties at the Office of Grant Administrator, Mike Klein Peter of Klein Peter Consulting Group, L L C. Sincerely, Dave Williams, Town Council President. So the, for this to be a part of our application process, they are asking for Town Council President to sign that letter. All right, I will get that sent back to Klein Peter, and then we'll take care of this after the fact, okay?
Okay.
All right.
You done?
I think I'm done.
Okay, unfinished business, park board. We're going to table that for right now, the we found out that Lilly may may provide additional funds for Sir Robin to use to pay the extra gas that she has working with her for the time it takes spent, but it's it's up to Lilly now to decide whether they're going to do that, so. Prior to that, we'll just table that till the next meeting, see what happens. Sarah, we'll move into the town cleanup, will you come up later?
So Sean has arranged for us with the county repub, um, if we wanted to do either the first or second weekend in May, however, we did not contact the salvage yard. Gary and I are still trying to decide where might be an appropriate place, because they might not have the room down. because they might not have the room down there like they used to. So if anybody has any other suggestions for location, um, open to that.
Did you say they don't have a room for it?
They haven't crashed out in a while. There's probably 1,500 fires in there right now. There's, I don't even think they could make the, I mean, I've contacted Steve in the morning to see the hand, but I don't think so.
Um, I think at this point, it's a little too short of notice for, uh, so, um, I'm going to suggest that we contact the waste company and see if they either have, if we want to push it back to June or wait till fall. I don't know, let the council.
Yeah, I think definitely we're going to have to wait and see what we can do. The only other place I would recommend, and then that would cause a problem down there probably with the utilities to be cleared down there at the Palm. But don't they, did we used to have a dumpster, big dumpster?
We're just looking for a place to temporarily hold the dumpsters for the day while we do trash, it'll be trash day.
So we just park in the dumpsters, full dumpsters, or?
No, they drop off two dumpsters at a time, and then residents come in and unload. Well, we have the backhoe there to help assist with that. But the difficulty is having space, basically.
As they get full, they change out the dumpsters, right? So it's a continuous thing.
Because the salvage yard, all of the property in front of the salvage yard itself, you know where that old house used to be? Well, they thought about putting there.
The problem with the right there is that they were hauling in dirt, and it's having really been compacted. That well's pretty solid. Down in the bottom part of that, to the west side, that down there is pretty solid. But he has hauled in some melons and some dirt down there. There's piles here and there. I guess I'd go down faster and see if there's enough last spot. It doesn't really take that much space.
What about all that Earl out there at the end, out toward the, the sewage plant, where you got to turn around? Is that all been gravelled so it can?
No, there wouldn't be enough ground there anyway.
You gonna let them up there?
I'm not sure how you get people in and out of there. I'm not opposed to doing it back there if there is room. My concern is if there is really that much room and getting people, I mean, you don't ever, you don't always know how many people are going to show up. How many are going to show up at once? But getting a circle and getting them in and out, it's one lane, pretty much. I could see having a lot of problems getting in and out of there. But I, I'm not opposed to using that. If we could get it, if we could get the stone in there.
Yeah, if you get stone in there to do it, that would be, if that, would that be big enough if it was all stone?
I don't know. I'd want to take another look at that and think about that for a minute. I would, like I said, I'm not opposed to doing that back there. But I just want to make sure there's actually enough room.
Can we, as the council, decide if maybe we want to push this off for fall? Or so we can contact the?
Do you have a date scheduled already?
No, not officially scheduled, no.
What about the area back there, down there by the recycling, is that we can have?
Yeah, I thought about that too. They have to be on the, they have to be on the east side of that gate. We'd have to talk to probably Beasley that's running, that works on the cars there, if it's okay to go in there, but you could, you could put dumpsters on the east side of that gate, which would be east of the one that's there now, that big one that's there now that picks up whatever it is.
Probably more room at the sewage.
Well, that's kind of what I'd think, because you, but I, I don't, if you backed up against that fence, you'd have, you'd put a spread of a part a little bit, you'd have room to throw things in there and get, the truck would have to turn around and back in to pick those dumpsters up.
Another spot that might be big enough, that you might get a lot of nails and stuff on the ground, just pickers in the line, like the elevators. Well, that's another thing that concerns me back at the sewage pump. You get a bunch of nails back there and what we're dumping. Right, then we're going to have to pay for new tires on the bike. And other people be getting flat tires back there. And I'm sad I'm, I don't want to be negative about this, but I do want to be a little careful about.
Well, they didn't get them before when they added down to junkyard.
I don't know whether they did them all.
They're there, they're compliant.
Yeah. Give it out by side.
That's why I'm sitting down here.
Okay.
And I mean, is it, is it going to be the great haul of the vehicle, or that dumpster into the ground? Is the chances of eventually being down there is going to cause a bunch of flat tires now? In, what, 14 years, I haven't had anybody that's picked up.
Okay.
Down there, no.
Uh, I say let's look at it. I don't think we're going to make a decision in the night, because.
I don't have a problem with putting it off till, till fall, but would it look like that they would have more time to be able to go down to the junkyard in fall, or is that?
I can contact people. See, he's going to have to freshen up some.
Okay, well, I was going to say, is that, is that just clear out of the picture, or is it a possibility?
Might be possible in the fall.
See, see what he says about when he thinks he'll have room. If he doesn't want to do it, me and Earl will go out, kind of look at that out there. I just need to go out there and get an idea of how much room is there.
Well, I thought we left, we made that so there was enough room out there to have plenty of room to drive out and turn around and come back out there. If, if we had to drive around.
I'm not worried about getting turned around. I'm worried about getting people in and out.
On the road.
On the road.
On the road, and yeah, I mean, the road's going to go right to where you gotta.
It's going to be one lane, yeah, I understand that.
It's going to be, it's going to be right there. You don't have anywhere to line cars up.
No.
While others get in and out. That's, that's.
And then if you have to have a truck coming in to drop off and pick up.
Yeah. That's the, I just want to see. Is there lots of? Look at before I say, yeah, let's do, I mean, I guess if we want to get technical, it's in sewage pump, and that's your guys' part. So I guess if you want to say do it, we don't have a lot to say.
Well, the other, the other thing I think would be easier would be down at the end of Front Street there at Beasley's place on the east side of that gate that goes into where they got that storage in there for whatever electrical company's going in now there, but we can't block that gate, but.
He's closed on Saturdays, he said. The ideal thing would be able to put your bins inside there, and then you drop off and you go around the building and you come back out and you're on your way. I don't know who owns it.
What's his name? Owns it? That one, that is the?
Megan Collins.
Collins, Collins. He owns it. But he got a lease to, whoever, it's got a bunch of electrical equipment in there.
Can it be done on the utility lot? People drive through the alley?
You're not going to.
One way?
On the asphalt.
I think it'd be tough.
Power lines too, with the backhoe bucket, that wouldn't be a good idea.
Do you say wooden one on the asphalt?
Yeah, out here. Uh, what, uh, do you, do we have a contractor, small company that can ask them to use their backlog?
I don't.
It's a great big area out here west of town where you can pull in and drive. Long as it's dry.
I was going to say, right now, you're not going to get by it, do you think? Okay, that's, just, let's put it off the table until later, and we'll see what we can do about this fall, get something set up. Uh, Lions Park usage advertisement.
Okay.
You're going to do, right?
Well.
That we have to advertise?
We have to advertise, so, um, let's see. Okay. Okay, so she's referring to renting the space. I'll say she, she's sending me texts here, and if we need to call her, we'll, we'll call her. So we have to treat leasing or renting the grilling area, just like we did with the wave upstairs. So we have to be able to write up a plan as to how that area down there is to be used. Now, the K of P, they're wanting to use area that comes basically clear back to the shelter house, which I understand that by the time they get everything done. One of the things that, okay, so first of all, I don't know if you guys have been down there and looked, but that caboose that stores the grates for the grill, that caboose is rotten. And to make things look nice, because the Park Board is, they're, and they're with plans right now to make that park look really nice when you come into town. So really, that caboose needs to go away and be set on fire someplace. So one of the things that we could do is we could have in that advertised agreement that whoever is leasing that space provides their own storage shed on that property, and that they would also have to insure it.
I think that K of P has a chance to do something. With that building, I would think you'll have a problem getting that to pay for it.
And, yeah.
I think we just have that question. At this point, I feel like we're catering to them for this ground stuff.
I don't know why we can't do it. Why can't we just do it the same way we ran out the shelter house down the other park? We just, they come in, they want to use it, we just sign the paper so they can use it.
Well, here's, here's the thing. If, if you're going to do it that way, then you have to let anybody that wants to come in and use that grill, use it.
Okay.
So who's going to be responsible for making sure all the grate stuff is put away?
We're not going to provide grates.
No, why, why do we have to let anybody use it? We, we just let them, we stipulate they come in, they want to rent the, the shelter house down there. They rent the shelter house, not, not the grilling place.
Well, the shelter house is a whole different ballgame. The shelter house is already.
Part of the park. If they want, if they want to use that park and the shelter house, why can't they use it the same way we do it down here to the park?
The park they will, but not the grilling area.
Well, we're not going to let them use the grilling. It'd be stipulated, the grilling area leaves off limits.
So the K of P group, if you recall, have come to us and asked if we would lease them the grilling area
I understand that.
So they can continue grilling. So if you don't want them to continue grilling, then as council, you need to tell them you're not going to let them continue grilling and not going to be using the grill.
I don't think that's.
I didn't say that.
No one said we don't want them to do that.
We don't want, maybe we don't want them exclusively.
It's simple. It doesn't have to be rocket science. We, all we have to do is have a piece of paper that if you come in and you want to use a shelter down there, we say, okay, the date you want to use it, you can use it. And you use the shelter, you're not going to use the grill. And if they come in, K of P comes in and says, wants to use the whole thing, we just say, okay, what date is it? We say, okay, and we got a piece of paper that says that.
But if somebody else wants to use the grill, if we don't have a lease agreement, then we have to let anybody use their grill.
We're not going to use it if they don't have any grill, grills going.
Why do we have to let anybody?
Okay, let's see what Amy says here.
Rumpy, you need to listen to Sarah. You haven't heard what she's said the whole time. You're arguing with her, but you need to be speaking to Sarah.
She's down there so far, I can't hear her.
Okay, speak up, Sarah.
So I think when you exclusively lease to the K of P, but you're also allowing the shelter house to be rented, you potentially could have a conflict, a scheduling conflict. Somebody might not want to be renting the shelter house while they're grilling, while they're using the grill. Um, I don't think the K of P is going to be using the grill every day. So why not offer others to use it?
Okay, here's what Amy says.
Use the grills?
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't, we don't have grill grates for it. They can't use it.
Okay, we, currently, we own the grill grates. We own those.
Okay.
That's what's in the little caboose. Well, however, the K of P didn't put them back inside the caboose, and I don't know why.
They're getting rid of some.
Is that what they're doing?
There's some that are no good. So if I may, I'm going to answer your question. If you let everybody in town use the grill and use the grates, and they get in the caboose or whatever is there to get that stuff, I think what you'll find is the K of P will say, okay, we're done. Because we're not going to go down there on a Saturday to sell chickens for somebody to raise some money, and half of our stuff we can't find, or it's dirty, or they ruined something, or whatever. I'm, and I'm not saying don't let other people use it, but I think that's what's going to happen if you do that.
I, and I agree with you. I think what we have to, we we might be setting ourselves up. What if 4H wanted to do it?
4H did it last week.
Right, so.
They just come to the K of P.
Okay.
If, if the K of P owns the grates, we, if we own them now, we can scrap them. Let the K of P buy their own grates, and you ain't got to worry about anyone else using them.
Well, here's what Amy said. She said it would be fine to just have a reservation if they don't want to store their equipment there. So if we want to give the K of P the grates, and they have to store them elsewhere and haul them in every time they're going to cook, then we can do that.
That doesn't make any sense either. They're, they've already said they're going to tear, they're going to take that caboose out there and tear it down and put a storage shed up there.
Okay, well, right now, they can't do anything because we own it. They don't.
I understand that, but I know what, what the plan was for them to get rid of that and put something in there that meets whatever would be, satisfy us as a, as a building to store their grates in.
That's why we would have to have a lease so that everything is written out in agreeance, just like we do. We've got a contract with the Little League. We've got a contract lease with WAVE. It's, it's the same thing.
So.
I think the, I think writing up the lease with the K of P, so that they control the grates and cook them. And then if somebody else wants to use it, they would have to get permission from the K of P. I, I think that'll work. But going back to, we'll throw away what we got in the K of P to get their own, that won't work because those were made by Stan Morton. You don't go out and just buy those at Walmart. And it would be expensive. Of course, Stan did it for nothing, but Stan's not with us anymore. And getting them made would be a problem, and the expense to make them would be a problem if you had to make them all over. And.
So.
That just doesn't make sense.
I do, I would like to have some language in the lease though to include that kind of like the, the Little League does with the Easter egg hunt for the park, that they try to be mindful of reservations of the shelter.
Yeah, so I have a calendar in here that when people want to reserve any of the shelters, I write it down for whatever day it's going to be on. Well, if somebody else calls in, for example, the large shelter, if they call in and, and they want the large one, then I just tell them, okay, somebody's already got that booked, but the small shelter and the gazebo are available. They'll decide whether they want to be down there with another crowd or not. So that'd be the same deal with the shelter up here. K of P would just have to let me know when they're cooking, which they're going to have to anyway, because we have the key to the locks. Which, I mean, right now, I gave them to Chris so that they could. Yes, because it's our property and we put locks on them. So we have the key to the locks.
But the new thing they're putting on would be theirs, like the Little League's. But the new thing they're putting on would be theirs, like the Little League's shelter.
Yeah, if they're going to provide their own.
The K of P is a community organization.
Oh, for sure.
The Little League wants to, if the Little League wants to cook chickens, and they want to do it, my thinking would be that the K of P would say, fine, but we're gonna have a guy or some guys there with you. That's what we did with the 4H last week. I was there last week. We had our guys there, the 4H people had their people there. We all did it together, but the K of P was there. Number one, if you're gonna have a picnic down there that you got 20 people, you don't want to cook on that thing anyway.
What's the, what's the Little League? How's their contract written that we just got signed? What do they own when they're using their contract? Do they own the whole park?
No, I would have to go in there and get that out and let you read it. We just got, we just got a signed copy back today. I haven't even looked at it. I can't tell you exactly how it reads.
We own everything, I think, except one of their buildings.
There's one or two buildings, storage buildings, that we don't own, they do.
But they carry the insurance.
Now, the Little League, you said something about the Easter egg hunt. Little League doesn't have anything to do with the Easter egg hunt.
No, I'm just saying they, they, they schedule around it. Like, there's times that are already pre-reserved that they are not gonna have any baseball games during that time. I just want to make sure, not that K of P wouldn't be mindful of that, but that they're, that we have a communication channel that they know what the shelter schedule is. Usually, people reserve things while in advance.
Yeah, most of the time.
But that we're communicating to them.
And I have no doubt they already know what dates they're planning on cooking.
I can't handle that. I'm not that involved with it. I would assume if they carry on like the Lions Club did, that there'll be a certain, whatever the day was each month or two months or whatever, yeah. I would think if they don't already, they will have it scheduled for the ones they know they're gonna have for them. And then every once in a while, you get, like, 4H pops up or the Little League pops up, and they want to do one to make some money or... 40,000, 20 million dollars to build a safety font. We might have to have a...
That's what I mean. How do they describe what they get?
They have, they have exclusivity to the buildings, but they are required to name and...
Yeah, well, I'm getting that. The whole thing, I mean, we're making a big mountain out of a molehill here. In the first place, what's his name, it's on your board. All he wants, huh? Pat. All he wants, and that's very simple, to go down there and measure from the street back to this side, to the to the north side of the shelter house, and have a footage and describe it in footage, north, southeast, and west. And that's what we lease to the K of P, the stuff that belongs to K of P. And they keep it, and they put up a building right there and put their stuff in it, and it's done. And then we've got a paper that says if you want to rent the shelter house, then you can rent the shelter house.
Right.
That's all there is to it. That's what I said, that, I said that about two or three meetings ago.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? I'm gonna be meeting with Amy anyway. I could take the Little League contract and sit down with Amy and go through it and try to figure out. I've got a couple of concerns about dedicating specific area because we don't want to get into publicly having to advertise that as an option for lease. So we want to make sure we don't get into those, those legal gray areas. So if it's okay with you guys, I'd be happy to sit down with Amy and go through the contract and see if we can...
Well, there was never, there never was an intent to let anybody but the K of P use that in down there. And it's just like Max said, if you go down there and look, they got those tin things set up. How you gonna, how's anybody in town that'll go down there and cook a chicken on that? You'd have to have about 50 pounds of damn bricks to put in there.
I agree.
You'd never get a fire hot enough to cook anything on it.
I just want to make sure we write it in such a way that the language doesn't allow state law to require us to go out for bids.
Well, Amy, Amy told me once before that if we're leasing it, and we had to do this for the room upstairs for WAVE, that it has to be posted in the newspaper. But you write up the ad in such a way that...
It's like we did for the building for sale. We wrote...
Exactly.
The advertisement for the building for sale, specifically to one buyer, that we only do one buyer, we're gonna fulfill that.
Right.
And if you guys are gonna get all technical about it, do we lease the baseball diamonds to the Little League? Or do we, is it, it's allowed to use it with a contract? It's the same thing.
I don't know what the difference is between doing lease and contract.
The caboose has a lot of charcoal in it. I mean, people would be using the K of P's charcoal. You don't want people to get in it.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to attempt for anybody to be using the K of P.
So here's what Amy says. We can put everything that's being discussed into the lease, so everyone's on the same page. Doesn't need to be complicated, and she's agreeing with what you were said, and yes, she can chat with you.
Moving right along. Okay, go ahead and chat with Amy and we'll get it straightened out here. Next thing's a resolution for excess stuff, and that's, I guess the gals went down and cleaned out the storage building there at the park. And it was in one heck of a shape. And they, they worked and worked, I guess, most all one day to clean that, that storage building out. And then they found a lawnmower in there that, what I was told today, it's a push type lawnmower with a motor on it, with an engine on it. It's not, it's not the old style rolling type, but it's got a motor on it. But evidently, the, the crank doesn't, it doesn't crank. So it's junk, actually, and we're just wanting to get rid of that. And then there's other, what else was there?
Okay, so all you've seen so far on this resolution was two metal and wood trash cans in poor shape located in the park garage. Over the weekend, Sir Bobby sent me a text and said they found this push mower, and can I add it? So I added it today. So we have resolution number 2025-7, a resolution declaring item surplus and authorizing the disposition of surplus items. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Thorntown, Indiana, met at a duly called and authorized meeting of the council and has determined that the following items are no longer needed and should be declared surplus and disposed of according to Indiana law. Now, therefore, the Town Council of Thorntown, Indiana states as follows. Following items are declared to be surplus property and shall be disposed of according to Indiana Code 522-22-8. Two metal wood trash cans in poor shape located in park garage, a push mower, doesn't work. The listed property has no market value because the value of the property is less than the estimated cost of the sale and transportation of the property, all of which is resolved this 21st day of April, 2025.
So theoretically, we could just thought, yeah, get rid of both of them. Is that correct?
Once you guys agree and say yes.
But that's what I'm saying, that because it's under, was it under $200 or whatever the amount is?
There is no value, so it just gets pitched.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-7. Second motion.
On favor? Okay.
All right, and it has to be signed by everybody.
Okay. Has anybody else got anything on the board? Anybody got anything they want to bring up? Anybody out there? Jeff, we didn't give you the chance to...
I'm gonna be attending, I think, Crane mentioned she was gonna be on the tax webinar that Amy's having. I'm gonna listen in on that as well, and I'm going to the roundtable Wednesday night, Crane. So hopefully, I can bring back some good information on Senate Bill 1 that got passed last week. It's gonna have some potentially rough effects on town boards, so...
Can you reiterate anything about that, what did get passed?
So far, what I understand got passed was a $300 credit on taxes for homeowners. So if your bill, if your tax bill is $2,000 a year, then you get a $200 credit, so it's 10% or $300. If your tax bill's $5,000 a year, you get a $300 credit, and that's credit right at the bottom of your tax bill instead of sending a check back like they did last time. And then there's, they did away with, well, the amendment stated that personal, or business personal property, the limit was raised from $80,000 to $2 million in two years. That will basically take out any business here in Thorntown as far as personal property. So we're gonna lose that revenue from personal property. The upside and the downside at the same time for councils like yours, you can request your lit tax be raised to offset some of those losses. That puts a lot of pressure back on locals. And I don't know that, I don't think that one's gonna be able to get changed. I think the business personal property has potential maybe to, to get changed over the time period here, the next couple of years, but I don't think it'll go below $1 million of assessed value. So still probably not too many businesses here in town would qualify under that to pay personal property, personal property tax assessments. There's some language in it about how the caps, and you can no longer do excess levy appeals. That's something I talked to you guys about a couple of months ago, is that you should probably look at an excess levy appeal. What that does is it says if your town's growing really fast, you don't think your assessed value is being reflected properly, you're gonna ask for that appeal to be raised. Apparently, they've done away with that appeal. That one is something that Amy was really pushing against because that is the only mechanism that you have to stay ahead of fast growth. But again, they're trying to, this is, this is another example of how the state takes a little bit of blame off themselves and lays it on your feet as locals. So they're trying to get you to pass a lit tax to make up for the differences.
So that the reimbursement on your property taxing, that'll be on, in '26 for this year?
Some of this has been retroactive back to '25, paid '26, whereas normally it would be '26, paid '27 on a tax, on a bill like this. But they made it retroactive back, so you're gonna feel that in '26.
So what, but what we got this year is what we pay, correct, for our property tax?
Yeah, I mean, it won't...
Well, it doesn't affect this year.
It could. It depends on how they send those tax bills out. They may put the credit on this year.
No, I didn't, I didn't see it on, mine's already, I mean, most of those probably already got already.
It won't, it won't affect the one you already got.
No, it would only be the following if you doubt, if they did it, but I don't think they're going to. I think it'll be the first paid '26 is when you'll see that credit. And then they're gonna start increasing the homestead credit over the next, it's eight years, until it's up to 66 and a third percent of that is. So it's going to limit the amount of property tax that you will collect over the next 10 years. So you're gonna have, I mean, unfortunately, I think what they're gonna be telling us on Wednesday is you're really gonna have to seriously consider a local lit tax. Better bad news.
Okay, has anybody else got anything? That's all I got. We got things to sign, right? Other than that.
Big, that green folder. Yeah.
Basically, what I was getting at was that if we're gonna put off the town, the town, if they, now, H6, that whole thing, she stores it there, they get the town clean, and she controls all of the town's things.
Yeah, well...
She's got some place she's gonna get rid of.
I don't know. The, next Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday, when they do a lot of cleaning for the pollinator garden and garden up here, the Lions Club and stuff, she's gonna have a bunch of trash from that kind of stuff that she's getting rid of somewhere. But, well, she's got somebody that wants to tinker with that lawnmower. So she'll give it to them to... Signature on that and the, yeah, there's two dockets and APB register. And you found the place to initial?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, perfect. Thank you. So I think after, you and I had that text earlier, I thought, oh, I bet we're watching that same tax webinar. So, and when, when you're talking lit, you're talking the certified shares, correct?
Local, local income tax.
Yeah, because it's, I don't know, on all my paperwork on this end, it refers to it as certified shares. So...
Well, the interesting part about that bill is that when you read it, it, it basically says that if you decide you need a 0.2% lit, the county council can't say no. They have to adjust the lit to make up for it.
But we don't, we're not...
Do we have what?
Do we just have this one left, and then we can adjourn?
Yeah, there's two payroll dockets and one APB register.
Hey, Crane, real quick, I got a question. The rainy day time, is revenue a year to date $158,000?
Yeah, remember, I took that, that trust Indiana money, and we were showing it under general fund. And Jared told me that I could put that in rainy day, so that's why that's, that's what that is.
So that raise in that lit, we, we request a raise in the lit, which would help make up what we're losing? Is that, is that what the whole deal is?
Well, that was their intent, yeah.
But the lit's restricted to what, what we can spend it for, so what?
You're talking a different...
You're talking about the...
You're talking public safety lit. No, because they're still having a discussion here. So the lit he's talking about is, on our paperwork, it's certified shares. We get $19,000 every month from this certified shares.
So how do we determine what we're losing?
That's something we gotta start working on. That's what part of this Wednesday is.
Because we gotta come up with a percentage, and then we plug that to what we get now. And, and then we request, I think it'd be 200 times 19,000, and then whatever that is, we request that additional from the county?
Possibly, yeah. There's, there's a lot of things we gotta learn about this first to find out how it actually works. But the, what we need to do is start, and I'm gonna start pulling some of these numbers together. I want to get the total assessed values for the town and then broken down by each different kind of assessed value we have. So you've got your 1%, your 2%, your 3%. So you've got your homeowners, your rentals and businesses, and you've got your commercial, that's 3%. So we need to get that breakdown first so that we know exactly, or at least get somewhat close to knowing what we can... So we need to get that breakdown first, so that we know exactly, or at least get somewhat close to knowing what we could lose.
So in other words, what we're doing is just playing the, playing the old carnival game where you put a, you've got three cups, and you've got a ball under it, and the guy shuffles it around, you gotta choose a ball. We're doing shuffle funs from one place to the other.
Well, there's some-
There's no more funs coming in.
There's some permanent, um, fixes that, that the state legislators believe that they've given taxpayers on property tax in this. And there's limits to how much lit you can actually collect. So, you know, in a town like yours, there's, there's a lot of things that play into this, and that's the average income for, for a family. It's the average assessed value, it's the amount that's in commercial, which is very low here as compared to some other places. It's gonna hit communities like this one a little harder because you're mostly in residential assessed value here. So-
About the two big, probably the two big businesses is Dickerson's and out here at South Company. And that's, right now, that's about all we got to-
Yeah.
Play with on businesses.
So there's, I mean, once we take a look at that, we know what those, that breakdown is, the different types of assessed value we have, then we can start seeing a little bit clearer picture of what it might affect us.
Ready? Well, we got it, yeah, I am wanting to get done.
I think we're done.
We're done, okay.
I make motion to adjourn at 8:57.
I have a second.
Second motion.
All in favor? Oh, nobody's opposed to curtain? Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Sorry to rush out of here, but I am miserable.